It's the first of April, April Fool's Day, it was earlier 2021. First of all, I'd like to just take the usual codex as red. Can I remind everyone that this meeting is being livestreamed? And hopefully it's going to be lively on Facebook. If you don't wish to have your faces shown on the Facebook profile, please can you turn your cameras off? Can I ask you to stay muted unless you are allowed to speak? And please indicate with your raise your yellow hand that you wish to speak. So if you have mobile phones or any gadgets with you, can I ask you to put them on mute? And first thing really is to see if we have any public participation, but we don't. Okay, thank you, Yola. I can see councillor Wiggily has his yellow hand raised. Do you have any problems connecting?
Yes, Chair, I'm just trying to get my camera to work. So I do apologise for not being on video at the moment. But as soon as I can manage to make it work, I will appear. My apologies.
Okay, okay, thank you. Right, so first off then, let's go for apologies for absence, please, Yola. It looks like everyone's here, I must admit. So thank you. And I believe councillor Foden is coming along, but it's going to be a little bit late. So, okay, we don't have part two for the agenda, so we don't need to look at that. If members have hopefully had a read through the items that we're going to be looking at this evening. Does any members here have any declarations of interest, please? Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Myself first. Old Town Street, I know the applicant very well, so I won't be voting on that. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if there needs to be. But otherwise, that's my interest.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that. Any other members have any interests to declare at this stage? Okay, I'm not seeing any indications, so we will. Unless councillor Wiggily, you still got your hand raised from previously? Or have you anything to add?
No. That was a legacy hand, I do apologise.
A legacy hand, wonderful statement. Okay, that's brilliant. Okay, do we have any urgent dispensations to look at at this stage? Thank you, Yola, no. Have members all had a chance to have a look at the minutes for last month's meeting? It held on the 11th of March, just checking the date. You happy for me to sign that as a true record of the meeting? Do you have anyone got any comments on that? Or if you're happy, if you're happy, please raise a hand, please. Councillor Wiggily, can I ask you, thank you. Thank you, councillor Wiggily, we'll take that that you're happy as well. Do we have any correspondence and any updates at all?
We do.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, we've got applications granted in support of this council's recommendation. Site of Shell Cove House, 19 Old Timothay Road, erection of carport to serve approved east cottages. Langston Cliff Hotel, Mount Pleasant Road, Fell of Wood and Poplar. 21 Woodland Avenue, variation of condition two on planning permission. 20 oblique, double zero five nine oblique F U L. Two storey side and rear extensions and rebuild first floor to alter the design. Paella delivered pride fitness, change of use in outbuilding from gymnasium storage use class D2 to catering business use class E. And then also the listed building concern and the application for Lower Rickstall House, a lower Dawlish Water extension to north elevation to form additional living accommodation with access to the garden and new porch to existing scullery entrance.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, it kind of brings all those memories crowding back in. Okay, let's move on to new applications for consideration. We will start with item eight there, 2100459. This is for Fairfield House on Ashcombe Road. So I forgot to ask Yola to show us the screen so we can have a look at that. Just to refresh our memories. Okay, so this is an alternative plan to one that has been before us in the past. So the current main building on the site is now going to be replaced with five terrace cottages and a holiday let. This was a school, as I recall, there was a fire there, if I remember. Okay, we go back to members. So I can't see any hands or any indication, but have any members got any thoughts to share on this item? Just to start us off. Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, a bit disappointing really that we appear to have a replacement application for what would have been a rebuild of the original house. Effectively, it will be divided up into separate units. On the other hand, I think the overall architecture that we're looking at here is quite attractive and very sort of country cottagey style, although you know, quite a large collection of five buildings. But I think they're worthy replacement. They're not trying to ape the original. They're trying to have, you know, some very nice buildings individually. Or that form a nice collective design, but also individually, they look very attractive as well. So I certainly wouldn't have any objection to this scheme.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Next person in the queue is councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I am familiar with this site. It's pleasing to see that they're taking into account a lot of eco-friendly ideas and that they would be using traditional materials and reusing some things on the site as well. I am a little concerned that it's a narrow road and it's going to create additional traffic. But it's very difficult to be able to compare that with the traffic from the most recent use. Originally, of course, it was a private house long ago. So that we have, I feel I have no grounds on which to argue the case about traffic. But generally speaking, it's a very good design. It's very sympathetic to the local area and to the topography. So I feel I personally, I couldn't have any objections to it.
Okay, thank you, councillor Morehead. Councillor Tamlin, you're next to speak, please go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's a good design. I note that the highways aren't very happy about the number of extra vehicles on a very narrow lane, basically. That's all I've got to say really, but yeah, I like the design.
Okay, thank you, councillor Tamlin. Councillor Heath, you have your hand raised, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Can I ask if we could find something on a screen first of all, before I make any comments? So at least I've got my facts right. I have done a virtual tour here this afternoon, right down the road on the Google Maps. Because I spent quite a bit of time in this one. I couldn't quite work out, because we've had the picture just come up of the little section of the road. But I want to know how far up to the top before it joins the big main roundabout? Or how far down towards Dawlish that building is? So I don't know if anyone is very good at doing that. I know Martin Wiggily isn't very good at doing that when we're at the manor house, putting it up on a Google screen and seeing exactly where it is. And the reason being, it's already been raised Devon County Council's report, who aren't very happy. But before I say that, I wanted to know how far it is before we get to a slightly wider section? Because I've got a horrible feeling, it's almost halfway along. Is that possible? Can we do that? Because I just couldn't get it to work.
As far as I'm aware, it's not far from the Emson's Hill end of Dawlish. It's the little road that it almost looks like a single track. It's about, I don't know, a single track and a bit, I suppose. And there are small passing places along there. And I would say it's the kind of closest property there is, but it's not about halfway along. It's, I'd say about a third. I've walked that road a few times for my sins. And it isn't too far away from the actual Emson's Hill end of Dawlish. That road joins on there. But I'm, you know, happy to, you know, we can have a look at that. Councillor Taylor's raised his hand. Is it coming on this point, councillor Taylor, you wanted to speak or is it?
It is, Chair, yeah. Slide seven actually shows two aerial, two maps of the area. The first is a one and two, 2500, which is just the site. But next to that, there's a land ownership, the Luskam Estate land ownership map, which also shows bits of, a section of Dawlish. And in fact, just shows Emson's Hill on the bottom and Weech Road too. So where it joins. So it isn't really all that far along the Ashcombe.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's which shows us quite well, doesn't it? If you have a look, yeah, there's the urban area of Dawlish. You can see where it links, that red box, as it were. Is that useful for you, councillor Heath? Can you see, put that in context with that on screen?
Yeah, sure, you can still hear me, yes. It is helpful, but my comment, if I can make the comment out of that, so.
Yeah, yeah, please go ahead.
I am personally not very happy about putting more and more buildings along this, shall we say, more or less a single track road, especially with the vehicles these days, four by fours, that you just can't get past them. Picking up on Devon County Council, they're asking for more information before they make a decision. So for me, I wouldn't be able to approve it until I see what they're saying on it. Because obviously, it is more traffic and five or six homes and one holiday cottage is going to meet quite an increase of traffic on a totally road that's not appropriate. You know, country lanes are country lanes, they're not for lots of buildings. So that's one. And the other thing is, I am a little bit surprised, maybe I'm mislooking at it, that you're all very happy with the design. If I'm not wrong, it's basically three floors, isn't it? Ground floor, first floor, the sort of lofty type floor. That's correct, isn't it?
Yeah, that terraces, yeah.
To me, I don't know if there's a very big manor house next to it or something. Doesn't seem that appropriate for the middle of the country. I would have thought more of a country cottage style and only, you know, ground floor, first floor would be in keeping. So for me, it's a no-no, I'm afraid, unless you can persuade me. But I'm only one person, so it doesn't matter.
I know from walking that route, and I'll just make a quick comment here before perhaps other members want to jump in. It's quite, it's nicely bedded in the landscape there, the actual site, in my opinion. There's a lot of tree cover and it's also, on the opposite side of the road is a field with like really large, developed, well-developed hedgerows. So I think it can take, I mean, I'm sure the building that was on there was at least three stories. And I think these are not dissimilar, but obviously there's possibly more of them. But they're of a similar scale. Obviously, we don't know about what vegetation is being retained, but they would, on paper, they would sit comfortably within the site, but that's all I'd say. So it's always a matter of opinion, isn't it, councillor Heath? Councillor Taylor, you wanted to come back in, please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Chair again, yes, to help councillor Heath. The 3D images, I think, are probably the best things to look at to get an idea of the scale of the building. So that slides 22, 23. And I think what they show is that the building is two stories, in fact, at the front, on the roadside. But because the site drops away quite substantially at the back, it's built on a plinth at the rear, which gives access to the rear garden. So its impact from the road point of view, I think, is no greater than the original house, which was certainly a grand house with a high roof line. And from the back, because of the difference in materials, they use stone for this sort of lower floor area. It sits very nicely in the landscape. So I would advise councillor Heath to have a look at those 3D images. It's a shame that we don't have all of the information from Devon County Council with regard to highways. But my, and I think councillor Morehead made this point, was that it's difficult to do a direct comparison between what we're looking at now and what was there in the past. But I don't imagine that there's such a large increase in traffic that would make the difference between what was there originally and what is there now.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I've read this in detail. It does mention exactly how far it is from Dawlish and from adjacent properties. And it isn't that far. It is a narrow lane and I would have been happier if it wasn't five plus, well, anyway. But they do draw attention to the fact that looking across the valley from the other side of the brook, that it will look very much the same as the original building, going back now before the school, the actual original building, because of the topography. And I see that there's a lot of input regarding bat pathways and all kinds of restrictions and regulations and requirements. So obviously, a lot of thought's gone into it. Again, not ideal, but we don't know, we can't compare. It's not a like-for-like situation. And it looks good from my point of view. They've, they seem to be using the right materials. They're doing a lot of eco-friendly things, which should please councillor Heath, and reusing materials in the foundations and whatever. So again, I feel it would be difficult for me anyway to oppose it.
Thank you, councillor Morehead. Councillor Lawver, please go ahead.
Keeps flipping back.
I was trying to unmute you, Kim, I was trying to unmute you, Mary. I think you were muting yourself.
No, I was on muting.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you. There were, how many bedrooms are in these houses? Because it's not actually down on here, it just kind of says five terrace cottages.
I think there's all plans for them, but I think there are at least three, three bedrooms. Because there is mention of the section 106 money. And as family homes, it would be subject to paying towards the schooling of the children, so.
If I may, I think it says two and three bedroom.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Morehead.
Right, yeah. No, so there would be easy access therefore for children. You know, if it was a school, was it an open school or was it a private school, boarding school? Before, do we know? Because then there wouldn't be that much traffic to in and throwing.
It was a day school, as I recently recall, for people with learning difficulties and disabled children. So it was definitely a day school. So there were people coming in and people going home. So there would have been more traffic from that point of view.
Yeah, so there was already traffic. Yes, no, I'm fine, thank you.
All right, thank you, councillor Lawver. Councillor Heath, you've been having a think. What would you like to share with us?
Yes, one just thought really. When we approve these things, obviously, Team Bridge has had the last word. But when we approve them, we are always setting up some sort of precedent. When do we turn houses down on a narrow road? It's not fair to say for the next lot, oh, because we've got enough now, you can't have them. We either believe that the roads should be increased, increased, until nobody moves, or we don't. And just because they got in first, I don't think there's a good reason for approving it. That's why I should still be voting against it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Heath. Well, I think lots of people have said, everyone seems to have had their say, but we don't seem to have got any further along down the line. I'm of the mind, and I will share it with members at this point. I'm minded that I'd like to know more information and if they are going to do more studies on the actual road. Because I think we've had, we've looked at this item before and the road potentially could be problematic. But it's not, it is not in a different scale to previous bills on the site. So it's a balancing act and it could be that further information will come along down the line. So on the proviso that the road advice doesn't change, I would like to propose that we accept it as it is. But with a special kind of highlighting the fact that we can have concerns over the narrowness of the road. And if they are going to be doing a road report, then obviously, Team Bridge would need to, they're going to have, probably when they come to look at this, they're going to have the full information in front of them. So councillor Morehead.
I'm happy with what you've said, but I would suggest also that it seems to me that the owners of that land and the owners of this application also have land further along that road. And we might be able to suggest in conjunction with the Devon County Council concerns that passing places be provided where possible.
Yeah, I'm happy to take that as an amendment to, an addition, if that's, if you will, of the statement I just made as a proposal. So thank you for that. I think that's a good addition. It's a reasonable point to ask for, because that's going to make it a much more safe proposal from that point of view. Okay, do I have a second? Councillor Wiggily, your hand went up next seat.
I was going to second your proposal, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have a proposal and a second, so we will go to the vote, please. To accept it as is, as per stated. Thank you. Any, anyone against? Thank you. So I don't need to ask if anyone's abstaining, because that's all of us taken care of. Okay, thank you. Have you got all the notes for that? Yola, you happy? Yeah, okay, thank you. Well, let's move on to the next item. This one, 2100468 Peppermint Park, Warren Road. And this is really, I suppose, a technical application in the sense that it's modification of section 106 Agreement on Planning Permission. And that's literally all we're going to see, isn't it? Thank you so much for that, Yola. That was, I want to say informative, but I would be lying. Okay. Yeah, I'm not 100% clear, if I'm honest, on the drive of this. I don't know, councillor Taylor, I was going to hopefully be fully informed by your good self if you've had a look at this one. And you're just having a look now, aren't you? I can tell by the look on your face.
Yes, I'm sorry, Chair, but I haven't had the opportunity to look at the background information on this particular one. Unless we, I could look it up, but unless you want to move on to another item, if.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best thing. I think that's probably the best thing, because it's a technical item that they want to. So we do need to know what we're looking at. So if you'd be happy enough to have a look at that one for us, and we'll move on to the next item. I think that's the best way forward. So we'll go on to 2100541, and that's the house called Dulce Dunne, sorry. To Priory Road, that's probably the easiest way for me to say. And this is raised decking. So these are quite substantial decking area in the garden of the property. And if you know Priory Road, which I'm sure members do, it's on quite a steep part of the hill near Strand Hill. So the garden stretches up and some of it's dug in and some of it's not. But any thoughts, members, on that one? Anyone have any opinion on that one at all? Councillor Tamlin, you were first to raise your yellow hand, please go ahead.
Yeah, Historic England, a very favorable, a very positive report from them with a number of the things that they actually like about it. So they did make quite a positive statement about it with about, I think it's about half a dozen points as to why they think it's good. It is a listed building, isn't it?
It is, yeah, it is. But this being the garden, but yeah, thank you. Thank you, councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having looked at the photographs that go with it, it's apparent that where they wish to build this decking is almost in a pit between the other buildings. So I can't see that it would impose on any other buildings. And I can see the necessity to actually get up a little bit into the air. It's to me rather obvious that they need to have something raised there to be able to get into the sunlight or whatever. And I can't see that it would be a problem. They are completely surrounded by walls and they're deep down. So I personally would have no objections.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments from members at all? No? No, okay, I'll share my thoughts. I agree with councillor Morehead. It's, it can be at certain times of the day, I would think it's quite much in shadow. So I think that is mostly the reason and the kind of motivation behind the application. This is going to mean that they're able to capture a little bit of the sun at some point. It's all wood and the plans indicate stairs and for a good reason. I don't think there's any overlooking or any other problems with any nearby properties. I'm comfortable with this and as I'm not hearing any other opinions to the contrary, I'm quite happy to propose that we accept it as it is with no objections. Councillor Lawver.
My second.
Thank you, councillor Lawver. Okay, did anyone else have any other comments just before we go to the vote? No? Okay, we'll take a vote that we're going to accept that with no objection. I see a show of hands. Thank you. Thank you very much, members. We will move on to 2100545. And this is Oakwood Court, seven to nine Oak Park Villas. This is the school, which is now joined with, I believe, the school up near John Nash Drive. And it is the pods, they have sighting of four pods used as classrooms, hair salon, dog grooming, et cetera, for educational purposes. What they're asking for is a change or removal of a planning condition, which refers to the timing of when they can actually use the pods. So it means that they can, they want to have flexibility to open the pods past 4pm. Okay. So although we're looking at the pods, it isn't the, that has already been granted. It's about the, it's about the opening hours, as it were, or the times that they can be used. Okay, councillor Morehead, you were first with your hand in the air, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a separate organisation. The school which merged with, which is now Orchard Manor School, was actually in Fairfield House originally.
Oh, okay.
We've seen this application before. And although it's, these pods are very modern looking and we're on the edge of the road in three cases or two cases out of four. Because the hours were limited and finishing at 4pm, as I recall, please correct me if I'm wrong, we thought that it would be acceptable. I must say that I feel strongly that this is in a mainly residential area and I see no reason to withdraw those restrictions on hours. If they increase the hours. If they increase the hours, it's almost making it a business. The whole purpose was to provide training. For those who attend the school, to give them life skills. And as far as I can see, that's. Up until four P M was within the usual. School, if you like, education, timing. So I see no reason to change that.
Okay, thank you, councillor Morehead. Councillor Tamlin, you were next to to speak. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with what councillor Morehead has said. There's been, what, three objections, very strong objections about the time being extended and how it would affect them, so to speak. So. Yeah, I I don't think it should be beyond four o'clock as well.
Okay, so you're 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 wanting to refuse in the same way as councillor Morehead is saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Yeah, did they say on their application what time they want to extend it to, or they just say extend it?
It says they want flexibility to be able to open the pods past four P M.
Right, well, that's a no-no, red flag, isn't it? If they said to four thirty, you think, oh, okay, maybe. But by not saying it, they could be open to eleven o'clock at night. So as it stands, what they're asking for is open carte blanche. So it looks like a no-no.
Well, it's for the as educational training. I wouldn't think it would have been till eleven o'clock at night, but. I appreciate I appreciate your point.
Yeah.
I appreciate.
But they should state what time they want it to. The fact that we said to that time was quite a strict thing, but it was a reasonable thing for giving permission. And they would come along and and take it off and say, well, actually, we don't, we want to go, it could be eight o'clock, who knows? They could have evening sessions. They do do these things in training. So. If the residents think it's bad and the councillors here think it's bad, then probably we should keep with the status quo.
Okay, thank you, councillor Heath. Councillor Taylor. And then councillor Tamlin, I'll bring you back in again.
Thank you, Chair. I just wonder whether whether this committee would would care to. Suggest whether there is a time that we would feel is reasonable for for these pods to. Opening times to be extended, perhaps to six o'clock, for instance, or six thirty, seven o'clock. But but to but to have an unrestricted. Opening time does 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 seem. To go against the spirit of the original, the original. Planning application which we approved, from my view.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor Foden, as you've put your hand up, I'm going to bring you in first and then go to councillor Tamlin. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to echo councillor Heath's comments. As there isn't a a time that they wish to extend to, then it is a bit of a red flag. If they had given a time, for instance, for example, to open to five o'clock, then. I wouldn't object to that, but as it's an open-ended, then I have I have my concerns.
Okay, thank you for that. So we've had a suggestion of five o'clock, so please can I ask members if you've got comments on. On that as an alternative time, but you know, you're you're own, you have your own opinions as well. Councillor Tamlin, thank you for being patient.
That's okay, thank you. I think the residents are concerned about the traffic, about the parking. I mean, they get it all day. I mean, we know that it it's really bad up there during the day. And I think they're concerned that there's going to be more parking, parents picking up the children, et cetera, than, you know, to stay on. And I think that's one of one of their complaints as well. Yeah, I'd just like to mention that about the parking and the traffic.
Okay.
Car car doors slamming and opening and what have you. If it goes later on, then into the night, I would I would certainly perhaps think six o'clock, five or six. I mean, normal hairdressers close about five, don't they?
They do. So if it was five o'clock, you would be more minded to think that's more reasonable, so extending it from a for an hour. From that point of view, you'd be you'd think that was more reasonable.
Personally, yes.
Okay, thank you, councillor Tamlin. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
I think what we're dealing with is the application in front of us. It's not really our position to be deciding what time we should say we would be happy with. And my opinion is that when they first put in the application, they obviously didn't do so on the spur of the moment. They considered what they needed to carry out the education purposes that they were there for. And they were happy with the times they submitted, which we agreed with. In spite of the fact, as I said before, they're modern pods, some of them on the side of the road. We knew that all of those things weren't. Necessarily welcome in the area, but we were thinking of the purpose of the school itself, which was to provide life training skills. So I see no reason whatsoever. For us to suggest any other times and for us to agree that they should change them according to this application.
Thank you. Thank you for that, councillor Morehead. Councillor Heath.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I was gonna say more or less the same thing. I guess it's up to us to approve what's before us. I mean, the teambridge can make suggestions, especially if it's a prior inquiry, but of course, this isn't. It's already approved. And it's approved with a timing, et cetera. So what we're looking at is, would we like to see what happens and we'll know. If it was to four thirty, like a few of us here, I wouldn't really object to that. I don't think it's going to make. A substantial difference to the neighbours, to be honest. But as it stands, I'm very happy to suggest, yes, you know, four thirty or five, but if that isn't really for us to do. Then we shouldn't do it. But if it is, I don't know any of the technical side of it, either Yola or. Perhaps one of our teambridge guys here. But if it isn't, then we we can't even do that. So I'll leave it to you on that one.
Well, at this stage, what we could suggest is that we're minded to refuse, but with the basis of the suggestion that. The the four o'clock was how it was agreed. Yola, you've, I can see a finger in the air. Please go on.
Yeah, the only thing I just wanted to draw attention to is obviously they've said that the hours between nine till four, but it also says Monday to Friday. So while you're looking at the times and what might be later, you know, it's also including the possibility that they could have weekends.
Okay, yeah, in other words, it's the days as well as the time is what you're saying. Okay, thank you. Okay. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to propose that we refuse this application. And. That. The hours first applied for. Seem adequate for the purposes.
Okay. Councillor Wrigley, you had your hand first in the air, so I'll go to you next, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And sorry for messing around with cameras and trying to get this this working right. I've switched to my other computer, so thank. For letting me back into the meeting when I was already there. I think it's reasonable to put in suggestions as to what we think might be reasonable times, because the likelihood is this may turn into a. Condition that might be set by teambridge on a subsequent. If they were to grant this. So whilst I have sympathy with councillor Morehead's position that we are commenting purely on the. What is in front of us and agree that our position should be that we refuse it on the grounds that we don't think an un. Uninhibited time is reasonable. I think it is reasonable for us to attach what we might consider to be reasonable times. Should the officers be minded to accept this with conditions, we'll give them an input as to what we believe those reasonable conditions might be.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Wrigley. Councillor Laver, I'll come to you next as you had your hand up. Thank you. Go ahead.
Again, no, I'm not. And I was just going to second councillor Morehead's proposal, because. A, I don't think it is up to us to make timings. It is a school thing. School hours, and that's the reason they put the application in. That was the reason why we agreed it. So for them to come back now and really think, well, our hours aren't quite right. And one question before that, is is this a residential school? Or is it? Just school hours?
I understand it's both, some are residential and some travel daily.
Thank you, councillor Tamlin.
Yeah, so I I'm I'm keeping to my guns and I'm going to second councillor Morehead's. Refusal proposal.
Okay, thank you, councillor Laver. Councillor Tamlin, please go ahead. Sorry, Carol, you're you're muted.
I haven't, no, sorry. I used to work there for a few years, and I know they have their meals between five and six. Anyway, the children who are residential. So I assume that they're looking at beyond six for these activities, you know. Just a comment.
I know, okay. Well, that's just adding, that's just adding more facts to the file, as it were, from that point of view, but obviously, we're. We're theorising, as it were. We have a proposal in front of us. I can see other members of would like to come back. Councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to say that by refusing this doesn't mean that they can't come back with a more sensible proposal. I think that's up to them, not up to us.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councillor Heath.
Yeah, I guess stolen the words there. Maybe we should see what they come back with. And then perhaps we can do our suggestion and say, well, our limit really for the neighbourhood is five o'clock, for example. Because it sounds like what was just been said, having their food between five and six, they're not interested in that. They're interested in plus seven. For an evening session, by the sounds of it, as lots of schools, I might add, do have evening sessions and the higher the buildings out. Because this is not quite the same with this place, is it? It's not quite a normal school in the sense it's open for public hire in the same way. But the same rules should apply. So, yeah, I agree, we should. We don't, I don't think we probably need to tag on, although I think it's quite a good idea of Martin Wrigley's, but. At this point, we probably don't need to. But if you should it come back again, or they come back with a time, then that's perhaps we should suggest the time. So I guess it's watch this space.
Okay, thank you, councillor Heath. So we have a proposal before us to refuse. With no added commentary from that point of view, and that's been seconded by councillor Laver, proposed by councillor Morehead. So we'll take a vote on that, please. Voting to refuse the application. I see a show of hands, please. Can I see a show of hands for anyone who would like to oppose that? Can I see a show of hands for anyone who would like to abstain from that? Okay. So that is carried. Thank you, members. Councillor Taylor, do we look backwards or do we look forwards at this stage, please?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So, yes, I have got, let me dial up the. I have got some information on on this.
We'll go back to the Peppermint Park then, if that's if that's okay.
Yeah.
So we don't need to see the the screen, Yola, thank you. So item twenty one double O four six eight. Application for modification of section one O six agreement on planning permission.
So 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 we're, Chair, I'm I'm not sure how members feel about this. I mean, it would it would normally be an item that we. The the nature of the variation is is regarding the section one O six agreement that we would never normally. Have a chance to to debate, really. And it sort of revolves around the fact that. While sixteen of the houses are social rent dwellings, I think if you recall, all of these. Were 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 particularly aimed at aimed at. People with with the lowest incomes. Some of them are shared ownership, and it's to do with the detail of the shared ownership, the percentage allowances. That that are in that are in the small Britain, the S one O six. So my suggestion, Chair, it would be that we offer no comment.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Councillor Wrigley, I can see the hand in the air. Please go ahead.
Yes, having having looked at this in in some more detail, I see that two things. First of all, councillor Taylor is exactly right. It's to do with the the prices, the percentages and the definitions of shared ownership and all the rest of it. And because it's to do with affordable housing, the agreement between them and teambridge within my portfolio, I will not be taking part in the vote on this.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, I'm I'm comfortable with with what I've heard. I can see a hand raised, so we'll go to councillor Morehead. And then I'll I'll comment further. Carry on.
Yes, following what councillor Taylor said, I did try to read through this. It's a minefield from my point of view. And I think we aren't experts on the technicalities and legislation. And I would be very happy to go along with what councillor Taylor said, that we make no comment, because. The officers at Timbridge are in a far better position to go into this than we are.
Absolutely, thank you.
So I would second his proposal.
Yeah, thank you. We can take that as read, Yola. Please go ahead.
Can I just clarify whether you're actually voting to. Label that you're putting no comment, or is this a question of just you're noting it, as you may do with when we have appeals and things like that, where there isn't really a comment to give at that point? Or you actually want to specify no comment?
Councillor Taylor, you made this, you you want to clarify your proposal in a sense?
Well, thank you, thank you, Chair, Madam Chair. Councillor Morehead, I think has seconded what was the suggestion, but I'm happy to turn my suggestion into a proposal. And to put that to members.
Okay, is that is that is that as a no comment? That's what Yola's wanting clarity on.
Yes, we offer no, we offer no comment as our comment.
Yeah. Thank you. And are you happy to second it on that basis? Thank you, councillor Morehead. Well, I think we'll go to the vote on that before we go any further. Thank you, members. So a vote to say no comment. Thank you. And no and no vote from councillor Wrigley, as as he mentioned.
And I must say, having been having had the chance to wander around Peppermint Park, it is a massive improvement on what was there. A year ago, which was a rubble site, and it's now a fantastically rainbow-coloured set of beautiful new houses.
Lovely. I was surprised at the colour when I was in the area. I must admit, that's it is rather nice.
They are quite bright.
They are. Okay. So let us now move on. I'm kind of losing my place here. Okay, now we're on twenty one double O treble five. This is sixty one. Old Town Street. Councillor Wrigley, you have your hand raised. Is that a legacy hand? I love that saying.
It is my my my, it is my apologies.
Thank you.
I've just lost the hands.
You've lost the hand, okay.
There we are, got it.
Thank you. So this is the property that is next to the entrance to the drive to the manor house. Although we haven't been to the manor house for a while with the lockdown situation and the fact we've been having virtual meetings. But the wall that's at the side of it there, to the right of it, is the, as we're looking at the plans, is the wall. That borders the gardens of the manor house. I think that's the right way of saying it. The proposal is a conversion to divide the building. So there's been a a modern extension, that we've had applications of extensions in the past for this one. And so it is dividing the buildings to form the additional dwelling. So it's not about building any other. Items other than to what's already there. It's about adding a door, as I can understand it actually on Old Town Street. And dividing it into two dwellings as opposed to an extended dwelling. Okay, we can obviously come back to this item if we need to have a look at the images again, but I can see at least one person has a hand raised. Councillor Laver, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this, again, I'm getting a little bit slightly cross with Timbridge. Because this is in the conservation area, so this application should be marked com. There's others that are marked listed buildings that should be marked and they're not marked. So I think we should take that up with Timbridge. All I'm saying is this is within the conservation area.
It is, yeah.
And so the windows and doors need to be in keeping. With conservation areas. Even, I'm not sure whether it's a listed building or not, because they've not said anything. But if it isn't a listed building, it still should be in keeping with the, as I would call it, street scene.
Absolutely. I totally agree with you, councillor Laver, from that point of view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from, from members? It is a conservation area. I don't believe the building is listed. Councillor Tamlin, please go ahead.
Yeah, just confirm. So all the alterations will be inside, so it's not going to affect the outside of the building or the street itself, well, apart from the windows.
I think there's three windows that face the street and I think one of them is going to turn into a door. So the access of the, of the actual front house, front of the house will not be from the side. You can see there's a drive at the side of it. It could be from a door on the, on the actual town street. And then there'll be a blocking up of a door that links the kind of extension that goes back from the main building, as it were. And some other internal, I guess some other internal blocking up of walls, et cetera, et cetera, to kind of separate the two properties.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moorhead, please go ahead.
Sorry, you moved me then. I couldn't find the word to tick. Yes, I agree with councillor Laver. There've been a few applications on this particular site over the last year or two. I'm not sure whether, if any, noted that it was conservation area, but it is important. And certainly, any windows or door designs should be in keeping with the original door designs. And it should be possible to see what they are because there's a whole row of cottages along there. And I, I would like to, whatever we decide, that we ask the conservation officers to take that into account, as councillor Laver referred to the townscape, the streetscape. They should look at that row of cottages as a whole and ensure that any replacement doors and windows that may be facing the road in particular are in keeping.
Thank you. I've just made a note of that while you, while you were speaking. Thank you. Councillor, I'm going to bring councillor Heath in first, as he hasn't spoken yet, and I'll come back to you councillor Laver, if that's all right.
Okay.
Councillor Heath.
Yeah, actually, I agree with that, that we should draw the attention to the relevant officers. Should be mindful to approve it is a good idea. From the application, the extension that was approved some time back, possibly with a mind to do this, is that one bedroom section or a two bedroom? Because I was just thinking, obviously, it is going to have more people coming and going. So do we know from that what, what they're stating on, on their plans, whether it's one or two bedrooms in that extension bit?
I think the, the only access to the extension bit is from the actual drive. That, so the actual door to the extension bit, you have to go down the drive to get to, and I guess there'll be parking access for that. The house at the front of it on Old Town Street, as I understand it, and this is again looking at the plans, is going to be accessed from Old Town Street and there's no associated parking with it.
Right.
So I don't know what the plans are for the property, to do with the owner, but I would say they're roughly a two-bedroom property at the front.
Right, okay.
I'm not 100% on that.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, sign it much. We should just add that, as long as it's acceptable to the various officers, then probably we wouldn't, would we? Or would we?
Well, that's what we're trying to decide, councillor Heath, thank you.
I know.
I'll leave you to, I'll leave you to consider that. And councillor Laver, thank you for your patience. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman and Chair. And this is one or two things rattling around. If they're building, they're dividing it.
Yeah.
So they must have to make the internal wall a thicker wall, because other than that, it wouldn't be very good, would it? Because it's a separate property, separate family living in it, so it'd have to be soundproofed.
Yeah.
Type of thing. And also, does it join another house?
The houses that.
Is it detached?
No, no, the whole row of those cottages along there are, are, they're all linked, they're all terrace. It's a terrace of cottages.
So all of them only have one means of escape, and that is the front door?
No.
Because you see, we do, even though we're terraced, well, we are, we still have a side entrance. And I'm always quite concerned when people only have one route of escape. And that's what they will be making this, won't they? Because the original house, they have the side as well as the front. Whereas this one, they're making it just unless they can get out through a back door and cross over. It is access and egress of the house.
Let's have a look at the plans.
It's the egress that I'm more concerned with.
It's, it's a good question. I think let's have a look at the plans. If we can find a good block plan, we can have a look at. I think that would probably hopefully answer councillor Laver's concerns there, or at least make it a bit clearer. So. Oh, there we go then. So that's, that's where the divide is. At the moment, there's the kind of dark blue area on the right-hand side there has got a door going out into the extension, and I guess that's where it's going to be. That's where it's going to be blocked up, I suppose. It's not 100% clear, but I think you're right, councillor Laver. I think there won't be access from the actual main house that faces Old Town Street. I don't think there will be access to the side, because that's where the second part of the property's got, there's a, there's a door there for them. And that's the, the three windows at the front, one of those is going to become a door.
Okay, right. Well, that, that's just, you know.
Okay.
It's health and safety thing, isn't it? I'm not sure. But, I mean, there are dozens of houses in Dorlish that do only have one way out.
Yeah.
I'd ask an internal wall as well, to make sure that it is soundproofed.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Heath.
Yes, just following on from those comments, they have, some years back now, because building regs do change regularly, approved some houses towards Timberth off the main road, towards the cliffs, and they only got one door. They were very strange buildings, actually. I did actually have a look at them when I went along, whenever built. I didn't like them at all. Yeah, I won't say anymore, in case anyone's listening. But basically, you're right, it's not a good practice, but I believe how they get around it, because I don't think it's actually illegal, as it were, is they have to have additional fire regulations involved in it. So if we were to approve it, we could make a suggestion with our proposal that subject to stringent fire regulations and fire doors. And they have to have the smoke alarms now anyway. Then if that's acceptable, then we wouldn't reject. But I think we should definitely add that because it is a good point. One door would make me claustrophobic, but you know, I'm not going to live there. But I think we should think of others when we approve things.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment. I know there is a comment on the, on the website from residents nearby that aren't, are minded that it's, as long as, I think this has already been said by at least one or two members here, that as long as the changes are in keeping with the conservation area, in other words, the door needs to suit the, the street scene, et cetera, then they, they have no objection to the, the internal changes that are planned. I think from, from that point of view, as the residents are, are more comfortable, I'm minded to say that we, taking the points that resident, that members have made this evening, I'm happy to say that we accept it on that basis. But officers, the, any alterations need to be in keeping with the conservation area. And I mean, building regulations, et cetera, councillor Heath would always be attended to. So I appreciate your point. I think it, it can be noted that that is something of concern, as if, as, as we are concerned with one, one exit to the, to the new property from that point of view, that could be noted too. I've got a couple of hands up. Councillor Moorhead, please go ahead.
You've actually said what I was thinking was apart from subject to conservation area concerns, that specific attention was paid to the fire precautions between the, the two divided parts. Other than that, I would be happy to second your proposal.
Well, I think they're close enough to, to, to have that added from, from that point of view. I think we have mentioned the fire. I did mention the fire regulation. So that's absolutely fine if Yola's comfortable that she's got enough notes for, for the, for the item. And councillor Foden. You have your hands raised.
And thank you. I've just noticed on the application form for this, this one, on page five, about vehicle parking.
Okay.
It's saying with this, with this proposed development, will it add or remove any parking spaces? And for car spaces, it's saying existing number spaces to total proposed, including spaces retained, zero. Difference in spaces, minus two.
Yeah, I think it's because there's a drive and if there was a parking space for a house that is on Old Town Street, then the separate house at the rear of that, that main house wouldn't have access. So I think that's, there will still be parking for the house at the rear. But I think it's, it's not going to be for the house at the front, if you get me.
Okay.
So I think that's, that's, that's whether, that's as I read it. But I appreciate it's, it's, it's the configuration of the doors that threw the clue my way from that point of view. Is everyone happy on that? We have a proposal and a, a second in front of us. So I'm happy to take the vote, but I want to make sure members are happy before we go to the vote. Are there any other questions or any other comments before we go to a vote? No? Okay. Well, let's go to a vote to accept with the provisos that we've mentioned. I won't, I won't repeat them all again. But voting to accept. Thank you. Any members want to refuse? Any members want to abstain? Okay. And I know councillor Taylor has, so that is carried. Councillor Taylor has, we've removed himself as, as mentioned at the start of the meeting. So, okay, that's carried. Let's ask councillor Taylor to come back. There we go, as if by magic, he appears. Okay. Let's move on to the next item then, please. This is 2100627, and it's St Jean on Exeter Road, which has been before us a few times. This is a slightly revised scheme for the garage that we have seen in the past. So this property is on the Exeter Road, heading down towards the road to Cofton Holiday Park. So it's past Sainsbury's, past Ladies Mile, all of that. It's heading towards the entrance to Cofton. So it is set in the countryside. Losing a lot to see from that, is there really? It's a slight adjustment from the point of view of the roof line, as I understood it. So I don't know if members have had a chance to have a look at that. If there are any comments at this point, please, please raise your hands. Councillor Moorhead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I couldn't see a great deal of difference from the previous plans. But if it's a matter of the roof line, that land, I'm pretty sure, falls away gently from the road anyway. So perhaps this has been done in order to go below, below your sort of line of sight. It doesn't seem to be, to be a major problem.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I agree with you, councillor Moorhead. It does seem just a slight change to the, the roof line. I don't, I didn't see any comments or any, any comments from nearby neighbours. And I guess they would be the only people who would be affected from that point of view. But it is set in, in the countryside, as it were. Councillor Taylor.
I'm not sure whether that was a proposal from councillor Moorhead, but happy to second it if it was.
Councillor Moorhead, are you happy to take that as a, as a proposal?
I'm happy to propose that, yes.
Thank you. And councillor Taylor's seconded. And just for Yola's records, I can see her scribbling away. Thank you. Any other comments from members? As set out, is that you, is, is that the wording that you're happy with that, councillor Moorhead? No objection as set out. Okay, thank you. All right then, members, we'll go to the vote to accept as set out. There we go. Thank you very much. Right, then we will now go on to Poppy Field Gardens on Port Road. 2100644. And this is for a certificate of lawfulness for the existing use of a dwelling, but without compliance with occupancy condition. And the occupancy condition is the person who lives there has to work full-time locally in agriculture or forestry work. So that's the condition that they're talking about, having, having it lawful, that you can live there without actually complying and being part of that condition. I think we've seen this before, have we, councillor Taylor? You're going to remind me, expect.
I'm, I'm pretty sure we have. And I thought we had agreed. But I'm, I am checking actually now to see whether there's something in the small print that requires a certificate of lawful development.
Yeah, I think it is, it is a.
On this site, I don't know whether it's to cover historic use of the site.
If I recall, we have seen it before and it was a, it was created on that basis, if I remember rightly. It was a, it was a legacy site as a, as a small holding and the building was only permitted. I think with that in mind. Councillor Moorhead. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is very complicated, actually.
It is.
We have been through it before and yes, we were keen to see the agricultural tie remained, which can apply to a grandson or daughter of the original owners, which I believe this person is.
Yeah.
But the first application seemed to go back to 1989. And it was only for an outline planning application. And looking at all the communications between the various officers and this applicant, there doesn't seem to be any sign of a, a full planning application. And looking at the photographs from 2003 compared to 2020, yes, there are differences between where the, the property was built, from where it was in the very rough sketched plans. But I don't see that that's a major problem. It's not that far away from the photographs. It seems to be a similar aerial photographs, seems to be a similar sized property and in a relatively similar position. But my concern is that what they're asking about is by granting a certificate of lawfulness, they're really getting, doing away with the agricultural tie. And I think that's important because if that applies to the whole of that plot of land, it could all be developed in future for just any general residential use. And that does concern me. If it was just applying to that particular property specifically, it might not be such a problem. I don't know the way out of this one. I think my feeling is that they should have to apply for proper planning permission. And that would be the way where it could be a formal decision as to what happens and what the ties might be. That's, it's a very, very muddled situation, very difficult. Thank you.
And it, it might be. I mean, we won't be party to this. It might be that this is the solution that has, has, has arrived, that it's the certificate of lawfulness. It is quite specific for existing use of dwelling without compliance with occupancy. So it's a very specific condition that they've, they've applied there. But I, I take your point that it's been a, it's been of historic interest with the comings and goings and the different changes on that, on that plot of land. So it's, it's clarity that we're looking for really from that point of view. Councillor Heath, you've raised your hand. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. You're just clarifying that. Are we saying, from what the last statement was, that the original building in 89, I think, was stated there, was never had planning permission? Or we say that did have planning permission, but it was agricultural? And now they're just sort of a change of use in a way. I'm not quite sure what was stated there. Because if it didn't originally have any sort of planning permission, then, yeah, once you actually change to use, the whole thing has to come back into it. So do we know whether or not that original one, I don't think we do, mind you, for the complication is. Did that original building have anything? Or does it predate town and country planning and it was just there and now they want to change it?
It was being used. It was being used as small holding the land at the time. So the person who lived and worked there was able to, to kind of tick the box that they came under that same tie, agricultural tie. If I remember rightly, when we saw it last time, and I see quite a few members of hands wants to come in on this, but I'll just mention it. And obviously, members can add to that. It is, as councillor Morehead has mentioned, it is a relative of the owner who had that before. Grandson, perhaps, if memory serves me right, but I can stand corrected. But the belief is that there is no way of actually having an income from the small plot of land that there is to actually mean that that's, that kind of condition bears any relevance in today's kind of economic times. So having a small holding and having a, the equivalent of a very large allotment on the, on that land would be great. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't generate an income enough for someone to to live just there and live and work there. It's my understanding. I'll go to members. Councillor Tamlin, you have your hand raised and I'll, I'll come to you councillor Morehead shortly.
I don't know if I'm, I'm going from memory really. When I, I read this application, in that Teambridge actually wrote a letter today saying that they could do no more. So I'm just wondering, who can actually make that decision? Would it have to be Teambridge or does it have to go further than Teambridge to make that decision?
My opinion would be, be going back to Teambridge for the officers. And which is why I suggest it could be that this has been the solution that has been, has been discussed perhaps with the applicant to see if this is the best way around this circumstance to change that condition.
Thank you.
Councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I am simply concerned because it's been occupied for so long. Normally, after I think it's about four years, if something's been occupied, they can apply for a certificate of lawfulness. I may be wrong there. I'm sure councillor Wrigley or councillor Taylor could put me right, or yourself for that matter. But I, I'm just concerned that in this particular case, by doing that, the agricultural tie is lost. Now, I don't, personally, I wouldn't mind if that is only kept to the building itself and doesn't apply to the land. But I am concerned that if that tie is lost for the whole plot, that we're leaving it wide open for future development. I don't know the answers. My, my feeling would be that I would prefer to rely on officers at Teambridge who know a lot more about it than I do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Councillor Wrigley, have your hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. Might I draw your attention to the letter from the officer? The officer concerned is Stephen Hobbs, who is the senior planning enforcement officer. This is as a result of a long conversation and a quite a long email trail. And it says that he's looked at the details and asked colleagues to do so, blah, blah, blah. Having spoken, it was considered that the original planning permission still stands and the conditions are enforceable. So it would appear that they're trying to do something that is not in, within the current planning conditions. However, he says, if you think this original planning permission is no longer enforceable for the reasons you've stated previously, then you can still submit a certificate of lawfulness with evidence to support it. The way I read this is that this is a, a planning enforcement action to enforce the original conditions of the, of the agricultural tie. It doesn't appear to be a deal that the officers are offering. It does appear to be the applicant wishes to to try all avenues open to them. And I would suggest that in this case, we support the officer decision and recommend refusal of this application.
Okay, can I take that as a proposal from you councillor Wrigley? That sounds very much like one.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. Councillor Morehead, you raise your hand first.
I would like to second that, please, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councillors Lather and Tamlin, were you about to second as well at that point? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a proposal and a, thank you for clarifying that. There was an awful lot to, to read through with that. So that's really good to have that, that clarified. We know where we are with that. We know which side of the fence that we're on from that point of view. Okay, councillor Heath, you have your finger raised.
And the yellow hand.
Yes.
Just before we vote, I don't think it's going to change much, but the only thought is, they're obviously, are they concerned that this person who lives there, relative, will not be able to survive in this place without this change? Because he can't have an income off the agriculture, which is what we're trying to save. So we're not going to shoot ourselves in the foot, are we, by saying no? Which means he will move out and then he can't do anything. So that's my only concern. I don't know whether that's too complicated or what, but they are.
As I understand it, it is the gentleman who lives there who is saying that he cannot make an income with, with the tie with that amount of land. But, and that's the, it isn't the, the officers that's imposing that. That's the, that's the condition set on the land, the tie is on the land, as it were.
He can still stay there, I assume, until he is sort of wants to finish with it. Or will he be chucked out because he can't stay there at all? That's what I think I mean.
I suppose if he doesn't comply with the, yeah, if he doesn't comply with the agricultural tie, but I mean, I, I'm not sure, I've got two hands in the, in the air at the moment, but I'll, councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just say that this tie was known about for generations.
Yeah.
But the other thing is, this, whoever lives there wouldn't necessarily have to, as I understand it, work the land himself. But it would be possible to rent it out for, for somebody else to use for horticultural purposes, which it was before in two thousand and three. You can see the very long polytunnels and so forth. Or for a local farmer to graze or whatever and get some kind of income from that. So I don't see that as a reason for wanting to get rid of the tie. Other than it would be a lot easier to sell the house and move elsewhere without a tie.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. Councillor Wrigley, please go ahead.
And I think if I read it correctly, I mean, just to add to what councillor Morehead was saying, the income for whoever lives there doesn't have to necessarily be derived from that plot of land, so long as they are employed within agriculture or forestry.
Yeah.
So this is a house that cannot be sold to the open market and built and turned into a mansion on a large piece of land. It must be retained as an agricultural worker's dwelling, which sort of implies a local person on perhaps more restricted income than perhaps somebody who might wish to sell it and buy it on the open market. So that's the reason, as I understand it, for such a tie in, in normal circumstances. So I think there are plenty of people locally who would love to be able to live in a building with an agricultural tie because they do work in the local agricultural and forestry business, even if it's not farming or, or, or using that particular piece of land.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, we have a proposal and a second. Yola, it's been a little while. Would you be kind enough to clarify the wording of that proposal? Hopefully you have a note of. Hopefully you have a note of that.
Sorry, I seem to be muting and muting myself.
Okay.
Yes, so it was refusal in support of the comments of the Teambridge officers.
Okay, the, the Teambridge enforcement officer. Okay, yeah. Okay, so I think we will take a vote on that and see where we are with it. Okay, thank you. So refusal on that basis. Thank you. Any abstentions? Okay, so that's, that takes care, that takes care of everybody. Thank you. Thank you. Right, we will move on to the next item, which I think is the last item. No, it's not quite. We have a tree preservation order, close, but no cigar. Okay, twenty one double O six six one, Major, site of Shell Cove House on Timoth road. And this is a variation of condition two on planning permission. It's been all about planning conditions tonight, hasn't it? And this is a slight change to West cottages, which are the ones that they're building at the moment, which are the ones in front of the Woodpecker property. There's quite a few slides, I think, to have a look at this, but. Okay, what I could see was there, there was a slight change in the orientation of some of those cottages at the front there. Okay, we have some hands in the air. Martin Heath, please go ahead.
Right, as we all said, help, not this again, but there you go. It gets very technical again. I'm not actually sure what you said, Chair, was actually correct. The, the, they renamed this, but as you look at it from where the entrance is, where you're standing, look at it.
Yep.
The west side, which is what they're talking about tonight, I think, is behind the substation, which is not built, and there's a big pile of earth like about twelve foot high with diggers on it. That's what I think they're talking about. The.
It is that, it is that side. They are just starting that.
The east side is what's already been built with the, which we changed the tile roof, remembering quite a few months back. And they know what it slates us on, with a now a stone facade front. So I think we're talking about the right hand side, as you look at it behind the substation, which if I got this right as well, about, oh, three months ago, was it? We turned down, I think unanimously, the design, which was either ultra modern, looked like sort of central London almost, with all glass. Do you remember it? We said it was all out of character. What's that doing there? Now, unless I've got this completely wrong, I, I assume that this revise and these new designs are that. Because they can't be changing the other stuff. It's already finished.
It's condition two.
Such as the tiling and things. So unless I've got this to say completely wrong, I think this is the bit behind the substation, and this is a new design, which I must say is a lot better than the other one, which is a good thing.
Well, what it actually says is it's, it's a material change. So, yeah, it is, and it is. It's the West cottages numbers seven to eleven, which is, as you say, it's the, it's the ones that are under the mountain, as it were, that they've, the mountain of soil that they've got there. That's right.
Under the what, sorry?
Under the mountain of soil.
Oh, right.
Or they would be.
Underground bunkers.
No, I don't know about that. Okay, councillor Wrigley, you were next, please. Go ahead.
Uh, Chair, I think last time we had this one, we, we raised an objection saying that we really wish that they would actually do this once and not send us change after change after change after change. And I think it might be timely to reiterate that because it's, it, it's thoroughly unclear what it is that they're trying to change here. We don't have a helpful delta from, from previous to, to proposed. You have to retain an awful lot of detail in your head to try to compare one to the other. And as such, it, it's, I'm thoroughly confused as to what they're changing.
Okay, yeah, good point. Councillor Morehead, you're next. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things. One, I think councillor Heath, the ultra modern ones you were referring to were those which were going to be in what was known as the orchard, which is the other end of the site. I'm exasperated that, as in all the other applications referring to this site, they use the initial application by Pegasus Life. And I am wondering, it's not clear, as everyone said, whether condition two was the requirement that all the properties were to only be available to people over fifty or over fifty five. And I have a feeling that's condition two is that. But without us going back to the Pegasus Life application to find out what the condition two is, we're in a bit of a predicament. But this has come up before with one of the other myriad applications that councillor Heath referred to. And I'm pretty sure that's what it is. They want the age restriction removed. I may be completely wrong, but I think that's what it is. How do we find out? How do we make a decision unless we know?
Yeah, okay. Councillor Taylor, can you kind of shine any light on this for us, please?
Not particularly with regard to the age restriction. Certainly, the condition two wouldn't be the age restriction because it's, it's relating to the design of the cottages, as I understand it. So this is purely to amend the design for cottages seven to eleven. And, and while I agree with members that it is confusing when you've got various aspects of the site, which are coming in for changes at various different times and trying to try and remember what each one might have looked like. And of course, that's, that's for those members that actually did get to see the previous plans. It would be nice to, to have a before and after that we can be looking at at this point in time. What I can say is that I think that this, that the plans that we've got in front of us today are rather attractive. Well, in my personal opinion, they make good use of the space, they're quite modern, modern materials. There's adequate parking. I have no objection to what we're looking at.
Thank you. In the meantime, while you were speaking, councillor Taylor, I've just looked up, I just clicked on the link and found a letter from the applicant saying that condition two is minor material amendments to the approved, already approved inland cottages seven to eleven. And the applicant is just seeking to replace the approved plans relating to inland cottages seven to eleven. And it's minor material amendments. So it's not about the age, definitely not about the age condition. The site remains the same, footprints the same. It is largely the same. The difference are minor changes to the actual materials, minor material amendments and the design, some of the design features. It's dark green windows, natural slate cladding, white brick. So, there you go. So I don't think it's as, perhaps as, as fearful as what may hate me, we may be thought. Councillor Heath, you have your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to ask if we can find who's in charge of the keyboard there. The site plan, if we could, because it should really show you on the site plan, the block. Because I think it will help to know for sure where that block stands, whether it's actually further towards the cliff. Or as I thought, just behind, you know, you say.
By the wall.
So it's not, but it'd be good if we could see it.
Yep.
I thought it was behind the substation, so, which is a different thing altogether. Because I'll carry on talking for a moment. We, we did vote last time or the time before that they didn't, we didn't accept the taking the age limit off. And as I think has been stated, they're not asking that at the moment.
They're not, no.
It still seems to stand with that. I don't think Teambridge have made this decision on that yet, far as I can see. So sort of in limbo on that as well. Right, okay, this is the block plan here, we're up.
Yeah.
You see the substation there?
That's right.
Right, so this bit here is a pile of earth at the moment. And up the top of the screen, behind the word plan, is the block that's already built.
That's right.
So this is new stuff, and I'm sure I'm right by saying, you said about the orchard, which I'm not quite sure exactly in relation to this here where the orchard was. Is the orchard further towards the cliff?
The orchard is, if you follow the drive, you can see the car pulling in from near the substation. Follow the drive, past all of the developments and past the cottage garage block, and that road leads to the orchard.
Right. Well, if that is the case, that's a separate thing. And I don't even know, I don't know whether you know, Chair, whether they approved that after we turned it down. But this is a totally different design, and I agree with a few other comments. It's a reasonable design, fairly similar, though not exactly to what they've already built. I think they've run out of money a lot because they went for the stone. It's cost them a fortune apparently. This specialist stone company, if you've driven past it yet, it's a traditional stone. It's really nice, actually, but they've got this compromise and design, which is still a sort of modern stroke cottagey look, if that's, if that's at all possible. But yeah, so as it is, it's not too bad. It is a bit overcrowded, quite frankly, but I think the original numbers have been approved. But I guess if we don't like it, we should say no.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor. Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Wrigley, you're next, please.
Thank you, Chair.
I think we're okay to come back, Yola, if that's all right. I think we've had a, we've seen that. Thank you.
I, I, I think the, the letter that you read out is helpful. I would, I was going to appoint councillors to that earlier. And based on that and based on what councillor Taylor was saying, if, if that was a proposal that he made, I think I would happily second it.
Okay, so your proposal was to accept?
No.
No objection.
No objection.
Thank you.
And, and, and based, basically on, on, on the idea that this is bringing cottages seven to eleven up to the material changes for East cottages one to six.
Yeah.
To make them the same as, 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 as the others.
Yeah, with the slate roofs, et cetera, as I, I read out before.
Yep.
Okay. Right, any other comments from members? We have a proposal and a second in front of us, so we can go to the vote, but I'm conscious of any, any other comments before we do so. No? Okay, we'll go to a vote. We are accepting the proposal, which was put forward by councillor Taylor and seconded by councillor Wrigley. So, accepting. Thank you. That's unanimous, Yola. Okay, and I was obviously getting over excited before because I thought we'd nearly got to the last one. We have one more item before us. And that is item twenty one double O six seven four. And this is land adjacent to sixteen Pine Tree Close. And we've got a lovely picture on the screen of a sycamore. And it's not for the whole tree coming down. It's been pruned where it is overhanging to clear the actual building. You see, it is quite a substantial beautiful tree, actually. It looks lovely when the leaves have opened, I think. Okay, thank you, Yola. Any, any input from members? Any thoughts at all? Councillor Wrigley?
I would put the usual caveat and leave it in the hands of the tree officer, who is the case officer, as I notice anyway, Mr Mark Waddams.
Yeah, excellent. So approval, you're, you're, you're saying approval subject to the approval of the, the tree officer. Thank you. Councillor Lather, you got in there by a whisker to councillor Morehead, so I'll come to you first. Thank you. I wondered if that was the case. Councillor Morehead, you've put your hand now, now, so you've, you've lost the race from that point of view. Did you have a comment or are you happy with that? Okay, that's fine. Any other comments from members? Councillor Foden, sorry, apologies, I didn't spot your hand. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I am, I was, I was going to second councillor Wrigley's proposal. And go, go with what the tree man says.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll go to the vote on that one, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, we have come to the end of a, yeah, we have come to the end of a very agenda this evening. So thank you very much for your input and patience this evening. It's been, it always tends to be busy, doesn't it? So there you go. Thank you for your work this evening and appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Happy Easter.
Oh, yes, happy Easter.